Good evening. It is 5:30 PM on Wednesday, June 30, 2021. And this is the special meeting of the Sandpoint City Council. I now call to order in the council chambers at City Hall 1123 West Lake Street in Sandpoint, Idaho. For the record, I am Mayor Shelby Ronstadt presiding. Also present are council members Shannon Sherman, Deb Rule, John Darling, Kate McAllister, and Andy Groot. Councilman Joel Espiro is absent this evening. As reflected on the agenda, this is a joint meeting between the Sandpoint City Council, the Westside Fire District Board of Commissioners, and the Sagel Fire District Board of Commissioners. I will now yield the floor to the chairperson or acting representative providing, I'm sorry, presiding for each fire district for call to order and roll call of each board. We'll begin with Westside Fire District. If the board chair or acting representative will please introduce yourself and call your board's meeting to order and announce who from your district is in attendance and who is absent, please.
Cindy Marks, Westside Fire District. Kyle Lothian and Cindy Marks in attendance. Will Gatsby is not here.
Thank you. So will you please confirm for the record that you have a quorum present for your, for the Westside Board?
We have a quorum present, and I call this meeting to order.
Excellent. Thank you. Sagel Fire District Board, it's your turn to call your board to order, please. Do you have a representative or board chair present for the Sagel Fire District Board?
Matt, go ahead.
Okay, Matt Lynn Scott for Sagel Fire Commissioner. I'm present. We have Mark Croft. He's actually our chairperson. He's on Zoom. Do we have Tom Trulock? Did he phone in? How about Jim Woodward? We do not have a quorum yet. See if we can reach one of them by phone here.
Pause for a moment and hopefully we'll be successful there.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to pause the recording for now.
Okay.
Pause the meeting.
The record reflect that we have Tom Trulock on the phone participating as Sagel Fire District's Commissioner. And for the record, Mr. Commissioner Lynn Scott, could you verify that your board has a quorum present?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'm having difficulty hearing.
Okay, Commissioner, we'll do our best to try to get sound to you there.
That question, Trulock, he's on the phone here. That's where we're going to have to be loud enough on the speakers.
Okay.
I think for him, if we can make sure we have all the mics pulled in so that...
Okay, we'll try to speak into the mic to assist Commissioner Trulock in being able to hear us all. Boy, these are loud, aren't they?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. So if there is no objection from the fire districts, I'll proceed with announcing the remainder of the items on our joint, with the city clerk acting as the meeting clerk for each of your boards this evening. Is there no objection? Okay. First of all, I want to thank everybody for taking time out of their schedule and coming together on short notice. This is critical, obviously, that we take whatever steps are necessary to protect the health and safety of our community. So thank you for making yourselves available. So we'll now proceed with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Mr. Mayor, sorry to interrupt you. I don't think you called our council by name as to who was...
I did, yeah.
You did, okay. I apologize then.
Okay.
Long day, too hot.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which sustains, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So the sole item on this evening's agenda is a proposal to consider banning fireworks due to extreme fire threat based on vegetative conditions during the current fire season, as recommended by the fire chief. We will now begin with a presentation from Fire Chief Dale Hopkins.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you're aware, Sheriff Wheeler approached the fire districts seeking support for a ban on fireworks due to the current weather conditions, the dryness of our property. So what we've done is, is the majority of the fire districts are convening either tonight or tomorrow to entertain this ban. We've got our districts here and the council to entertain that resolution, that thought. I recommend that to the boards and council. Our, obviously, temperatures are well beyond what we consider normal. Things are drying up considerably, and we need to do whatever we need, whatever we can, rather, to prevent fire and property damage this summer. It's unseasonably hot and dry, so that's where we're at. I just let the council know that my census, I guess you want to say that, from the other fire districts, is that they are going to approve this. It's important that we go into this with a unified front with everywhere in the county to make it clear to the public and enforceable. So we are recommending, I am recommending to our district boards and the council that we adopt the same resolution, the same material in it that the county has adopted for those areas that are, basically, all they did is the areas that were not in the fire district or in a municipality that has fire protection. So that's my recommendation to the council and to the fire districts. Would encourage you to do so.
Thank you, Chief. Appreciate that. One question I have for you before you sit down. We do have two different resolutions before us for consideration. One is, would allow safe and sane but outlaw those that project beyond 15 to 20 feet, I think is generally the stipulation there. Which of those do you think is the best approach in terms of doing our best to protect the city?
Consistency is important to make this understandable to the public. The county's ordinance, as it's interpreted by myself and the attorney, is that they are including or allowing safe and sane type fireworks. So my recommendation for consistency is we do the same thing.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Do council, or I'm sorry, Jennifer, would you like to add anything to that presentation? Maybe...
Pull up the joint resolution prepared. Chief Hopkins and Andy Doman, our attorney, who's participating electronically, and myself worked on this today, consistent with the fire chief's recommendations. I would note, as requested by the, by the fire chief, and consistent with what the county adopted, is the third paragraph, which defines fireworks primarily as, it's primarily aerial fireworks. It specifically, it specifically excludes smaller items like party poppers, poppets. We did make an edit in terms of our definition and our resolution beyond what the county had in theirs to specifically call out commonly referred to safe and sane fireworks, because that wasn't clear. And so for clarity for the public, what is excluded is what is considered safe and sane fireworks, toy guns, toy cannons, party poppers, poppets, and other devices. This is prepared as a joint resolution of all three entities. And the duration is for the fire season. We have prepared, if desired by council and/or the fire districts, we do have a second resolution prepared, which does include safe and sane fireworks as well.
Okay, thank you. At this time, I'd welcome any council members or commissioners to ask any questions of either the chief or Jennifer's staff. Yeah, go ahead. Commissioner Lynn Scott.
Is it possible to see what the county has?
Here's the definition of fireworks as used by the county. So you can see, we've been consistent with the fire chief's recommendations relative to the definition of fireworks, with the addition of the language in our drafted resolution that references commonly known as safe and sane. The county's resolution as passed applies to the unincorporated areas of Bonner County, outside fire protection districts, and municipal boundaries. So that is the reason that this action is requested by the fire chief of the two boards and the city council.
And does it have, I'm just trying to briefly run through it, does it have a termination time, or how do we gauge that?
There, it is the fire season. So we were consistent with the time period under this last paragraph, be it resolved, institute a fireworks ban during the current fire season. That leaves it open. And Chief, you might want to address length of fire season. You'll have to...
Yeah, that's kind of, they left that open. So it would be based on, give us some flexibility to base it on our fire conditions. What we typically would consider the fire season would be the time of year that we require burn permits, which ends on October 20. We have a rainy fall. There's no point to keep this ban going that long. And so, other than define it, you know, from a particular date, you know, where it ends, we just wanted to leave it open, or it says current fire season. So we have a very rainy fall, that's not an issue, and we open up fireworks. May, October 20, there's no burn permits required, so anybody can burn their bonfires and everything else, and we should be able to let people shoot their fireworks well before that.
Thank you, Chief. Anything else, Commissioner? Are you satisfied?
Well, I'm just thinking because it disappeared. That last paragraph, I think that's the...
If I may, Mr. Mayor. I switched back to our resolution to point out a difference between ours and the county's again, where the, we align that the period is the current fire season, but we specifically added language allowing for further action by city council or the board of the districts where there could be a resolution to rescind at an earlier date. So the resolution as passed by the county was for the fire season. Ours is for the fire season or via future resolution.
I'm just kind of curious if we shouldn't have the verbiage fireworks banned during the current fire season area shown, and in honor before October 20.
I personally don't think that's necessary. I want us to be able to rescind this ban as soon as we don't feel it's warranted.
Right, that would allow that to happen, honor before. If you had that verbiage in there, that allows us to do that. Clarify that intent, if that is a possibility.
Good. I just, I don't think it's necessary.
I agree with Chief Hopkins. I don't see a reason to add that either.
Yeah, we heard, I think we heard from Commissioner Trulock there that he agreed with the, I'm sorry?
Commissioner Croft.
Commissioner Croft, sorry, that he believes that, he agrees with the chief, that he doesn't see that that's necessary. Does I get that right? Okay. Any other questions for staff?
Mr. Mayor? I was just curious as to what's the probability that safe and sane fireworks would contribute to an active fire versus those that have already been banned by the county, the aerials? What's the likelihood of a, I mean, it's probably difficult to answer, but...
No, actually, you know, safe and sane fireworks are, they're all those displays that are put up on the ground. So misuse of fireworks, just like cigarettes or anything else, is very probable that they could start a fire if they weren't used appropriately. They shoot lots of sparks, kids with sparklers shoots off lots of, create lots of fires and lots of incidents. But I think for the city, the likelihood of that is significantly less than the rural areas where they have lots of dry grasses and fields and forests, but it's always possible. I think the problem with initiating a ban on that is it's going to be very difficult to enforce for law enforcement, and everybody does it, and everybody uses them, very common. We're selling them in the city. And so, this is like everything else, you know, briquettes start fires from barbecues, too. So kind of look at it in the same category as, people misusing products of combustion can start fires anywhere when it gets dry like this. So we just have to hope the public heeds our warnings and just bring it to light more, give more attention that, you know, this is a serious thing, and hopefully they'll be a bit more careful.
Thank you. And so sparklers would fall under the safe and sane.
They do.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, go ahead.
Chief, could you do me a favor? And just, I had talked to Chief earlier today, asking him a question about open fires and what the current status is. Could you brief the council on what you told me?
Sure, yeah. Today, the Department of Lands and the Forest Service raised our fire danger from high to very high. So that's where we sit today. The expectation is that by August, we will have moved into extreme, and we'll start seeing stage one and two fire restrictions. That's where we start going into Houdal effects, banning open campfires. And it gets to a point where you can't have briquettes, and you know, that kind of stuff, except for improved campsites. But we're not there yet. We just went to very high today. Weather conditions continue. I don't think it'll be that long, and we'll be going to extreme.
But to be clear, open fires are still allowed at this time.
Campfires, cooking fires essentially are very difficult to control, because basically you're telling people that use that as a means of cooking their meals, they can't do that anymore. So until they get into stage one and two burn restrictions, it has to be signed by the governor. It's very difficult, almost impossible, for us to tell people they cannot cook food on a campfire.
Last question, when was the last time that the local jurisdictions did a fireworks ban that you can recall?
I don't believe we've ever done a fireworks ban, because we have not had the sheriff essentially come to us and support that. And so, we can do bans. That's us here. Now, Hope does one. They have it every year. Samoan Fire bans fireworks every year. We just haven't bothered to go to this step, because if you don't have the support of law enforcement that's going to cite these people and enforce the ban, it becomes meaningless. So this is the first time, to my knowledge, that we've had the support of the sheriff. That's the same issue, we actually talked to one of the chiefs in Cootin County today, and they're grappling with the same issue, and the question has been the same with them. As the sheriff of the county, are you going to support this, and you're going to enforce it? And if the answer is no, there's really no point. So we don't get to cite people. That's the sheriff's job, or local police. So this is a unique situation, where we've had the sheriff actually come to the fire districts seeking support for a fireworks ban. To me, that should put a little bit of, you know, urgency to the need when you got the sheriff wanting to do that.
Mr. Mayor? Jennifer, is Chief Coon on board with this? Or, I mean, I know he's not here.
Yes, I spoke with both Chief Coon, as well as Bonner County Prosecutor Louis Marshall, who is also our prosecutor by contract at the city. And the chief supported, supported this as well relative to enforcement. Our approach through the police department would be primarily through warnings, unless, especially because oftentimes it's kids who end up violating these types of, these types of bans. So the approach would be primarily in education, and especially with this being new, although as per Idaho statute, if they're called back again, if they're responding, somebody doesn't want to comply, it's egregious. This is actually a misdemeanor offense.
Thank you. I'm just concerned about all fireworks. I mean, my yard is tinder dry, and I'm concerned about all of them, sparklers, et cetera. So, I mean, I, I don't dispute what chief says. He knows better than I do, but I'm really concerned about all of them, about sparklers and about just one spark. And, you know, I mean, I'm married to a retired wildland firefighter who did it for 38 years, and he's very worried about everything as well.
Yeah, go ahead. So I would agree with Councilwoman to my right also, however, chief's indication of keeping this consistent and enforceable in the partnership and collaboration that we're having across groups, to be able to have a very clear message as far as what our expectations of our citizenry to care for, city and our county. And this is, this is the challenge for me, because I do agree with that, and I work out on this. It's been, it's been hot, and I'm seeing my decision-making skills impaired. I'm seeing driving impaired. My hope is that tonight, we can send a very clear, consistent message to our citizenry that across the board, this is what we're going to do. And it also gives us that leeway, you know, to ratchet it up. I don't see it cooling down. It's going to get hotter and hotter, and we've had two, I think this is our second season of a lot of fuel in our yards and out in the county. So these are, these are concerns. I'd love to hear more from the commissioners also, and my fellow councilpeople.
Yeah, go ahead, please.
I would concur with fellow councilwoman, that I have concerns, just safe and sane. Most people, I don't think, even know what they possess sometimes before they light them off, and they're quite surprised themselves, and that's my biggest concern. One tipped over, I don't even know what all the fireworks are called, because I tend to shy away from them. But some of these things that I've seen, you know, shoot 20 feet in the air, and, you know, not on a level surface, it tips over, and all of a sudden, it's shooting 20 or 25 feet into the trees or the shrubbery, or whatever that may be. So I just have grave concerns about that. I think, to some degree, consistency is important, but I think the whole reason we're sitting here is because we want to avoid the worst possible thing that could happen, and it would be very sad to find out that, you know, half the town burned down because of a sparkler or something else. Again, that just concerns me, the level of possible intoxication on the Fourth of July in and around many, many parties, people not aware of what they have, and they set it off, and then we have a big problem. So I would just, I would be for something that is a bit stricter, and I don't want to put a damper on everybody's party, but it would be a lot worse to see homes burned down, instead of missing one day of sparklers for a year.
Fair point. Jennifer, maybe it'd be helpful to speak a little bit more about enforcement and what the plan is there? And, yeah, can you address that, for starters?
So the discussion that we've had about enforcement has involved both of the chiefs. Fourth of July has a significant impact on our police department. It tends to be a busy, high-call day, and they're also involved with all the crowds at City Beach, and then Exodus of City Beach. With that said, over the past few years, we've required that groups putting on the fireworks celebration down at City Beach, higher traffic control to free up our police. With that said, Chief Coon had asked Chief Hopkins for the fire department to support and calls related to any banned fireworks and education outreach, in addition to our police responding.
Okay, and what would that education outreach look like?
And it would be responding to any calls, if they witness it, any warnings. And again, the system as discussed would be a warning education system, unless it's egregious or they're called back, and in that case, it is a misdemeanor under state statute.
Okay. And would it fall, I mean, this wouldn't have to happen as part of this joint resolution, but just in terms of the consistency of messaging, in a number of the letters that, you know, I'm sure many of my fellow council members and commissioners received comments and letters from the public that are concerned about this issue. I think every single one of them that I saw was in support of some kind of ban. Some wanted to see more restrictions than others. But one of the suggestions on there, in terms of consistent and proactive messaging, was to put a sign at the entryway into the city on Fifth Avenue and on Superior coming into town, notifying people as we get visitors and tourists coming to town that we do have a ban underway. Is that something that is feasible, and would that, would that be something that would need to be spelled out in this joint resolution? Or is that something that if a ban were approved by this body and these bodies this evening, that we could just consider that applying, you know, administration to the collective messaging for, to get the word out on this ban?
It would be administrative, it would be administrative action. We could try to, we could try to, typically, those type, that type of signage coming into town, it's us using a reader board that we get from ITD, given the timing, the lateness of this, and all the construction projects. I think it's unlikely that we can get this pulled together and get that signage out by Sunday, but we can certainly inquire about it if council takes this action.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor? You can certainly use the chamber. I mean, if not, if you can't get a reader board to put up some sort of banner, because we're the first business right over the city line, so I'd be happy to have you put something there.
I was just going to suggest that we've talked a lot about public-private partnerships, and I know that Schweitzer Mountain quite often has their reader board at the base of the mountain. We could at least ask them to put the wording on it, or see if we might rent, lease, short-term something to put that to the entrance to town, if they would be open to that, to let everybody know. So that's a possibility, but just throw it out there.
Yeah, that's a good idea. So, and of course, I welcome any commissioners and council members to ask any further questions, and we'd certainly love to hear comments, but... But I'm hearing from the council here really to an interest in pursuing both of these ordinance, both of these bans, one banning all fireworks and one banning all the aerials and allowing the safe and sane. So I would ask the commissioners if you could, first of all, of course, get any of your questions answered here, but I would certainly be interested in hearing your comments with regards to that point of what the appropriate level of ban is. And I'm also interested to hear any ideas that you may have or interests that you may have in thinking through a more comprehensive messaging campaign to make sure that we have consistent messaging and that we're able to get that out to the public so they're aware of this ban if it is approved.
Jennifer, a question for you. If you just take the word "safe and sane" out of the version you showed us, that seems a little better with what the commissioners passed. I think that the "safe and sane" just kind of confuses people because there are no safe and sane fireworks.
The reason that we added the language in there about "safe and sane" is, "safe and sane" is what's sold at the fireworks stands in town.
And that allows that in that language is what I'm...
No, what it does is, we've used the, we've used the language that was used in the county resolution and then added the language or those items commonly referred to as "safe and sane" fireworks.
But that says shall not include automatic safety flares and everything below that.
Correct. This resolution is prepared in accordance with the fire chief's initial recommendation, which includes the aerial fireworks, but specifically excludes those smaller fireworks like party poppers, poppets, and other fireworks that are traditionally or commonly called "safe and sane." We have a second resolution. I'm sorry, I'll get it pulled up here. We did prepare a second resolution, not knowing what direction that council and the district boards would want to go. Your paragraph at the top is the paragraph that was in the first resolution. And the second paragraph includes non-aerial common fireworks. So this is a ban on both aerial fireworks as well as non-aerial safe and sane fireworks. And probably what should be on here is... This should be removed.
Melissa.
Andy, I think we don't want that language in there.
Can you turn this on?
Because the first paragraph is defining fireworks, and the second paragraph is defining non-aerial common fireworks.
Jennifer?
Yes.
The language that you just struck is part of the language that comes right out of the statute.
Okay.
Whether or not you want to remove it or not is your option, and it's, you know, based upon what the commissioners and what the council wants to do. The second definition is non-aerial common fireworks, which commonly refer to the items that we've collectively stated were safe and sane. That's also defined by the statutes. It's the overlying body of statutes to deal with fireworks bans only fireworks. It doesn't address non-aerial fireworks. So I just want to make sure that everybody's aware that if you're going to ban those, it's not necessarily part and parcel of the ban, which appears under 392609.4.
Oh, Commissioner, that language, I don't know if you could hear all of that. In statute 3926023, that language is actually included in the definition. It's a bit confusing in the resolution because the language is in there and it is included in the second paragraph. So our attorney's advising that we could leave it in there to be consistent with the statute, and that's the way, why he drafted it that way. Or for purposes of the public understanding, it could be removed.
So would, under the safe and sains, firecrackers, cherry bombs, M-80s would not be considered safe and sane? Because they're more than so many grams of...
I believe that would be correct.
So even though they're non-aerial, because they're more explosive, they would be included in this ban? Because they're not safe and sane?
I have no idea how much powder they have in them, but I believe, that's my understanding that they are not included.
Much of the discussion that has happened around the development of this is, it's happened here at the city amongst and with the fire chief among staff as we were drafting this, but also over on the county side as we were talking with the prosecutor, Lewis Marshall, about this today. Our Idaho code around fireworks is not very clear, and it's made it really challenging. And that's where we added in that language, the common language of "safe and sane," because what really under that definition of fireworks is included and not included from a layman's perspective is really not clear. It gets down to amounts that are in there, and it actually makes it very difficult even for law enforcement in responding. And clarity, is it 1.3 Gs or 1.4 Gs or what is it?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
I think just to your point and the point that Deb made earlier, just to make this as simple and as safe as possible for people to follow is just to ban all fireworks. Nobody, as Deb mentioned, you get a package of fireworks, you have no idea what's in it, if it's over the certain amount that's allowed or not. People are really concerned. There's noises going off. They call the police. Police respond. It happened to fall under "safe and sane," so that person's fine. You hear more noises. They call the police. The police come out this time. It's not, I just think it's going to be incredibly confusing, even if our resolution or collective resolution is different than the county's. It's just going to make, you know, response and understanding within the community just that much easier. Like, you just can't do it if that's what we decide to do. Otherwise, it's, I think people will take advantage of it and say, "Well, I didn't know. You know, I had no idea that this was not considered safe and sane." So it's just going to be out of control, I think, if we allow some and not others.
Thank you. Andy, is there something we can do about his volume? Because I have a question for him, and I want to be able to hear this.
I'm sorry, can you hear me, Mr. Mayor?
We can barely hear you. We've got Kevin working on it here. Maybe he can figure it out. But I assume you can hear me, Andy, so I have a question for you. And this came up at the county meeting yesterday, the question of whether there could be potential liability that the city could face, granted that we have granted these firework vendors' business licenses within the city to operate. And then we come back, you know, a week later and rescind that and essentially outlaw fireworks. So would there be, are we opening ourselves up to a liability there unwittingly?
You may very well be opening yourself up to liability. I don't know what the terms and conditions of the permits are. I do know under the statutes that firework vendors, especially temporary firework stands, have to adhere to specific requirements under the code and are held to a strict standard. But if we've issued a permit, and now we've turned around and said, "Well, by the way, you can't use fireworks within the city or within the districts," we may have liability. The question becomes for the council and for the commissioners of each of the districts is, you know, we have a severe, I mean, you're declaring that you have severe fire weather. And under those circumstances, you have to, you know, weigh the consequences of your actions and whether or not the safety of our citizens and our residents within our districts is of paramount importance versus restrictions on vendors. Can't tell you that you may not incur some liability or some, you know, pushback from vendors, but that's what you're deciding, is how to deal with what is otherwise a very severe, unique, and unusual set of circumstances around a holiday, which usually doesn't have that type of risk. As Chief Hopkins said, this is the first time he can remember any firework ban being considered at this time of year. So that's something you're going to have to face. You're correct. I think that was, that was an issue that was before the county commissioners yesterday at their hearing. They erred on the side of, under different question, but they erred on the side of saying, "We realize that there may be some liability. That's why we're enacting the resolution as it is." So I guess there's no easy answer. You may have liability, but to do nothing or to not restrict may be more equally as important to protection of safety of folks and their personal property.
Thank you, Andy. I appreciate that.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
So instead of...
Sir, could you please identify yourself for the record?
I'm sorry, this is Commissioner Croft from Segal Fire Commission.
Thank you.
Would it be, instead of potentially rescinding these business licenses, would it maybe be better for us? Because there is only four or five days available for this public relations campaign to co-op with the few vendors that are available in either the city limits or in the county, and have them help us with education as far as what people are buying. If we still wanted to adopt the safe and sane fireworks, let them help us on the front end of letting people know what the current fire danger is just in the county and then what the specific problems could be with whatever items people are buying.
I didn't catch all that.
Education and outreach and work with the fireworks vendors on educating the public if safe and sane are allowed, what is safe and sane and what is not?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. And it's my assumption, I appreciate that comment, Commissioner, and it's my assumption that, you know, we've had internal discussions, knowing that if we start to move down this path and even if we were to institute an aerial ban but allow safe and sane, that our officers and fire personnel would go out and make contact with those vendors and make sure that they're aware of any ban within the city and that we're all on the same page there. So I appreciate that suggestion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Would a ban on, say, all fireworks prohibit the businesses from operating? I mean, I know it's, it puts a big damper on their sales for sure in terms of timely use, but we're not saying people can't buy fireworks to use at a different time.
Yeah, New Year's Eve is ideal.
But I mean, there's, the conversation, how I'm interpreting it, sounds like we're saying if we adopt a ban, we're going to revoke their business license, and I don't think that's necessary. I mean, I'm sure the vendors will be not excited about a ban, especially an all-encompassing ban, but I don't think these, you know, have to go hand in hand necessarily.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
There is no provision in this resolution for revoking business licenses or ability to operate for the fireworks stands.
Okay.
If I could go back to a statement that Chief Hopkins made, that the reason that we're considering this is because the sheriff approached the chief. And so the sheriff is going to enforce a certain amount, and that's why we're doing this. We wouldn't do this unless we knew we would have enforcement. And it seems that the sheriff just wants to enforce the aerial and wants to maintain, going back to the county's resolution, wants to allow the safe and sane. So going back to the enforceability, I think that might be the most logical path.
Great point.
Yeah, I appreciate that point as well, Commissioner. However, you know, with regards to, there is a little bit of a difference here. Of course, the fire districts operate out in the county. The city has its own jurisdiction and its own enforcement mechanism through the police force. So, and this was something that we were having conversations with when we learned of the sheriff's interest in this as well. So we thought it, you know, was best politically to kind of follow their lead and join what they have going on rather than to initiate our own process. But, you know, just so you're aware, this, while the sheriff did approach the chief, we were having conversations internally about this. And, you know, we're aware that we're facing a serious risk here, and we need to possibly respond to that. So, but I do appreciate those comments, and a point well taken.
Did the sheriff request you, was the sheriff's fireworks in general, I don't recall that he had carved out "safe and sane"? That's the resolution as passed by the county commissioners, but can you speak to...
Yeah, that's accurate. Yeah, when Sheriff Wheeler approached myself, it was really, it was a fireworks ban. And so I was going on the assumption that he was being all-inclusive. And so when you read the resolutions the county passed, then it got into that, what is .25 of a gram and that confusion? As far as the enforceability of it, the sheriff and the prosecutor there at the meeting said they would enforce our bans. So I would assume that, given the proper circumstances, they would enforce our resolution, our ban, irregardless of what, you know, what type of firework it was. However, I don't think it's reasonable to think that any of the deputies are going to have time to go around and bust kids with sparklers. So, you know, I think that the likelihood of them getting a citation is probably fairly slim for that. It would be more of a situation where they were causing a disruption or some kind of a threat, you know, a fire being caused by negligence or something as opposed to just a mistake. But I am left with the impression that the sheriff and the county prosecutor would enforce our bans. He said so much in the meeting, so.
Thank you, Chief.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor.
So commissioners, any other comments? And if you, okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I got one comment. One thing we talked about yesterday, and I want to make sure that we take it into consideration. During the presentation by council for the county, there was a comment made that there is, under Idaho law, if you cause a fire, it's essentially strict liability. So you're going to be responsible for, to a large degree, the response costs, which could be catastrophic for any one individual. The purpose of the resolution here is to have a deleterious effect towards people violating, you know, a fireworks ban. And I certainly understand and appreciate Councilwoman McAllister and Councilwoman Rolls' comments, but I think what the ban should, we should focus on is trying to make sure that folks don't get carried overboard with fireworks and cause a catastrophic fire. The probability, with all respect, probability of a fire commencing from someone using safe and sane fireworks, I think, is rather minimal compared with the substantial and significant risk if they ban, if they violate the use of fireworks, you know, aerial fireworks, which could cause, you know, problems on down the line. So I just wanted to make sure that before the council and the commissioners vote on the resolution that they were aware of that conversation. And I think, I think the county and the sheriff's office and certainly our police force will be cognizant of that as we go forward through the weekend and hopefully educate folks not to violate the ban. So I just wanted to make that comment. So I just wanted to make that comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Um, this, I guess, is directed a little bit more at Jennifer. So if we were to pass safe and sane, it, as all of us seem to not necessarily be aware of which fireworks are what, and we can't, an M80, we're not sure, a cherry bomb, we're not exactly sure if that's .25. It, it seems like it's going to be rather a large amount of labor. Is there going to be some training for our police force and a long list of what is and what isn't? And, I mean, they're going to have to know if they're enforcing this. So to me, that safe and sane piece, because it's, it's open, what, what are our plans there? Are we, what kind of training are we planning on to, to make sure that people are clear and, and know our own force knows what is and what is not?
The chief is back tomorrow, and so whatever decision is, is made tonight, he will make sure that that information is, is passed to the force as best as, as, as he can, knowing what a, what a firework is that isn't labeled. There's going to have to be a judgment call. It's clear, it's clear with some of them, and it's clearly spelled out with the, the popets, sparkler devices and showers, sparklers, those are safe and sane. When you start getting into, is it, what type of firecracker is it? Does it fall under safe and sane or does it fart, fall on the other? Without them being labeled, there's going to be some judgment calls.
I just want, then to have the tools that they need to be able to enforce what we're putting out here, I guess, is what I'm trying to say. And if we're not providing enough education to the force, then that's going to make this much more complicated for them. So I'll fall back to no is really easy to define. Now, are you going to be able to enforce that everywhere? No, probably not, but it's, it's, it's clear cut. No means no. So I know we talk about enforceability and we talk about what the sheriff and the county wants to do, but is that technically the easiest way? I'm not sure. So just putting those thoughts out there. The other thought I had is that I feel like the, relative to the liability issue and back to the fireworks stands, as we talked about, I know there would be no business revoking, but if there were some kind of liability, I feel like that is much less than what we could have liability relative to our homeowners and, and our businesses burning down if something were to go extremely awry. So I would say that's a lesser liability than our citizens requesting this of us.
Point of reference is there's .95 grams of gunpowder in your average firecracker. So firecrackers would not be considered safe.
I believe if you read the highlighted description up there, it tells you what a safe and sane firework is and what is not. So if you read the description, 15-foot diameter circle, the 20-foot, not including the firecrackers, jumping jacks, whatever, that, that pretty much gives you the definition of that is what a non-aerial common firework or a safe and sane is. So when you're going to ban that, you would be banning everything. If you weren't going to ban safe and sane, that's your description of what we consider a safe and sane firework.
All right, go ahead, Counselor.
So is it too much, so would it be too much to say that in this resolution, we support what has already been written and done by the county? And then also say all-inclusive fireworks ban in city limits? Because right here, we're, we are safe and sane and sober individuals right now, trying to argue and debate this and try to figure out what should or should not be caught on fire. My concern, I don't want my town to burn down. I don't want, I don't want negligence. I trust and love our constituency and our citizenry. We are not in safe and sane times. It has been very, very hot. So why would it, why would we then have safe and sane fireworks? So we can continue to talk about this, but so you guys know where I'm at. I want to support the county. I want to support the sheriff. He, that, that's great that, and I'm very appreciative of you already getting out ahead and talking about it. I would like to support him and them as well as say, an all-inclusive ban within the city limits. It, no confusion, we're not going to have our police department going around, what was that pop? What was that pop? They're not going to be chasing anything around. They can handle real, they, they can do their job, their great job that they always do, rather than us adding more to their already expanded plate and including fire department into education enforcement. That's not their job. And it's our job to prevent, they have jobs, it's our job to prevent more for them to do. So that's, and that's all I got.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
And I think too, hearing from our constituency, I know all I've heard is ban all fireworks from citizens in Sandpoint. And that's been the, you know, other than the one email we all received to not ban them all, but, you know, and, and again, reiterating what Councilwoman Sherman said and also what Councilman Groot just said, how you either, it's get rid of them all, because how are we going to differentiate? And I think it would be a nightmare in having to enforce it. But our constituents, clearly, I mean, one out of, I probably heard from 50 people who said ban all fireworks in the city of Sandpoint. I've heard from one person that said, don't ban the fireworks.
Thank you. Commissioners, yeah?
Yeah, I got one question. I think it was the county's document resolution. It said, see attached map. I didn't know if you can take a look at that. And, and my comment is going to be firmly addressed.
Make it a little bit smaller here.
Okay. And, and see south of the, south of the river, you know, we, we do have quite a bit of, you know, different areas there that are not in our, our protection district. What falls within what the county has adopted? And like the Councilwoman McAllister said, it's going to be difficult to differentiate some of those areas. So I'm kind of leaning towards following what, for least for Segal for myself, is following in line with the county's.
Yeah, the public is not going to know where that district boundary is, right? And so if there's different rules on one side of the line versus the other, that, that can be a challenge. And it, you know, it occurred to me too, that we don't have to be consistent here either. You know, the city can pass one ordinance and, and each fire district can pass their own ordinance that they think is most appropriate for their district. So we have that flexibility as well. Thank you for those comments. Any other questions or comments from the commission? Either, either board of commissioners? Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
I just have one more comment that this would be down the road, but, so that we, well, we may in the future end up in this situation quite often, I hope not. But we somehow tie safe and sane to our fire dangers and maybe we come up with educational system, as we may be looking at this more often, that is constantly out there. Maybe we post our fire danger at our city limits and during 4th of July, you know, we can, depending on what that danger is, moderate, high, extreme, then we can attach what fireworks we want to see to that or, or just to take a look at this, once we get through this a little closer, to see how we can make it safer in the future and answer some of these questions. So I don't know if that would work or not, but it could become very appropriate and necessary in the future.
Thank you for those comments. All right, any other comments or questions from either the board, either boards of commissioners or the council?
I have one last comment.
Yeah.
I feel like this is a complete enforcement issue, and I find it very ironic that the two individuals challenged with enforcing those are not here themselves. I believe that we should have a consistent message with the county and that should follow through, through, and I, I would like to see it follow through to the rest of the districts. Safe and sane fireworks are as American as it gets for young children to do in their backyards, to do in their streets. I think it's completely unenforceable to ask our law enforcement, which are going to be very, very busy on, on this weekend, doing a lot more public safety situations than chasing down small individual firework structures that will, that will be on every single side street within the city of Sandpoint. And it's going to be impossible, it's going to be a waste of time and effort of our law enforcement teams to go around and chase sprinklers. They're clearly defining through the county that they can, in fact, enforce aerial assaults of fireworks, and they can probably proficiently be able to address them and keep them at bay. But I think without them being here and acknowledging the fact that it's an impossible task, I would not be in favor of, of, of full ban on any fireworks for the sake of our beautiful young children grown up.
Thank you, Counselor. Yeah, go ahead.
I would disagree in that you start to run into the same situation as, you know, you can't enforce everyone who's wearing a seatbelt, but we also have seatbelt laws. So I think you need to look at the education piece of it. It's a lot easier to educate the public to say no, and there are going to be those responsible parents that are going to tell their children, no, this year, it's a special exception. Hopefully, we get to do this again next season. But our homes and our friends' homes and our friends' property are far, far more important than one missed day out of the year. And I think it's a lot easier for parents to explain, not going to happen this year, and that, no, we won't be able to enforce every bit of it. But again, in those cases that are out of control, those can be enforced. And I think it's easier to have the education piece, again, as I already stated out there, it's more clear. That would be my thought on that. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone, any members of the public that would like to comment on this issue this evening?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Steve Wasoco.
Yes, hello. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
So I just want to say that I think a ban in general is not going to work. Most people believe that aerial fireworks are illegal in Idaho, even though they're not, and nobody cares. Everybody likes them off every year. I've lived in neighborhoods where everyone on the block spends $1,000 on fireworks. The problem I see here with the ban is typically, I, I like fireworks every year and I'm safe about it. I have a hose nearby. I have different, you know, we're watching, we're monitoring, we're doing it safely. There's a lot of people out there that are going to now not do it safely. You, you do a ban, I'm going to go light off a firework and I'm going to run. And I'm going to go and hide, and I'm going to do one every 10 minutes. So I'm not going to be monitoring whether that thing is burning something or not. Instead, I'm just going to just do it. And whoa, oh my God, you're going to warn me? You're going to come warn me? Like, that's, that's, nobody cares. People are going to do it anyway. And the bigger risk, I think, is that especially kids and a lot of people are going to go, oh, they're banned in Sandpoint? Well, let's go into the forest. Like, I own six rental properties on one street. I am totally unconcerned about anybody lighting fireworks. I do not think safe and sane, or I, I think aerial personally, I'd rather see aerial than safe and sane. Safe and sane, like someone said, can tip over and spread a 20-foot, you know, spray of, of fire to the left to a bush, you know? But you're not going to stop anybody with a ban. There might be a handful of people who care. Most people are going, I think, are, what they're going to do is they're going to light them anyway, and they're going to be hiding from law enforcement. They're going to take less care in how they do it. And I, I don't think anybody is really going to be concerned about, you know, getting scolded and getting a slap on the wrist from the Sandpoint PD, saying, if we have to come back, you're going to, some, you know, you're going to get charged. It's just, it's not going to do anything. At the very least, safe and sane need to be let alone. I, I think the risk is extr- when in Sandpoint history or county history has there ever been a massive fire? I mean, Deb rules, Deb rules that half the houses in Sandpoint burning down. I mean, that's not going to happen. It's, it's just not. We're being a little irrational in ours. I, John Darling, thank you for your comment. Kids need to do safe and sane fireworks. This is America. It's one of the most important days ever. And I just think the ban is unenforceable.
Your time is up.
Thank you very much.
Is there someone else who would like to speak with us this evening, Madam Clerk?
If there's anyone else online who would like to speak, please raise your hand. No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Is there any further discussion?
I don't want to problem this anymore, but if you can pull that map one last time. Something dawned on me while I was looking at that map. The prohibited fireworks area is everything on the hatch. You've got to shoot sometimes. I know, I'm blind. Obviously, I can see the lake. Is fireworks prohibited from being, being let off on the lake? From the high water mark, from the high water mark down in the lake, is it prohibited? I'm looking at that map.
Yeah, I don't believe so. I think that, that would be governed by the Army Corps, wouldn't it? Wouldn't they have jurisdiction over? I tell you, it wouldn't be any of our jurisdictions. I know that much.
Okay. So. I just, you know, I just was looking at that. It's not very clear. I just wanted, in my own little mind, kind of clear that out. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, that brings up a good point, that the Lions Club is still permitted to put on the 4th of July fireworks at City Beach or over the water, to clarify.
Okay, anything else on that, Commissioner? No? Okay. From the Sandpoint City Council, I will entertain a motion to approve the joint resolution of the City Council of the City of Sandpoint, Idaho, and the Boards of Commissioners of the Segal and Westside Fire Districts, Bonner County, Idaho. So I'm not sure what, which, you know, it sounds like the council is leaning more towards a complete ban. And so I'm going to allow you, whoever would like to make the motion, to declare whether you would like to support a motion for a complete ban or a ban on aerial fireworks. And if you have the, possibly have the title, titles up there? I don't, I don't have access to it here. Okay, thank you. So this one doesn't distinguish, this is the, the one that is a complete ban, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. But they're titled the same, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So would, would any counselor care to make a motion?
I'll make a motion for a complete ban on fireworks within the Sandpoint city limits and allowing, of course, I don't have to allow anything to the other boards to follow through as they see fit for their own districts.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? This will be a roll call vote.
Councilwoman McAllister?
Yes.
Councilman Groot?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rule?
Yes, and I would like to commend the sheriff and the county for stepping forward to do their own form of bans. I think it is a very good idea.
Councilwoman Sherman?
Yes.
Councilman Darling?
No.
Motion passes, and, and thank you for those comments, Counselor Rule. I, I also appreciate the county stepping up and- I also appreciate the county stepping up and taking some leadership on this to protect our county. Segal Fire District, if you would care to make a motion, please announce your name when making and seconding the motion for the record. Then please vote or indicate whether you would like for the clerk to conduct a roll call vote for your board members present.
Tom, are you still there?
Mr. Mayor?
Not hearing much of this.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Commissioner Croft?
Okay.
I will make a motion to enact a ban on aerial fireworks in the Segal Fire District.
So that would allow the safe and sane, is that what you're saying?
That's correct.
Is there a second on that motion? I cannot hear, I need to hear the motion, somebody repeat it to me, please, repeat it.
Commissioner Trulock, it is a motion from Commissioner Croft to pass a resolution that bans fireworks, allows the safe and sane fireworks, and is consistent with the resolution passed by the Board of County Commissioners.
Thank you. Tom, do you care to second that, the motion? Somebody, again, I can't hear, please.
Seeking a second.
I would second that. Is there any just, any discussion? Get all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those in favor, Commissioner Trulock.
Aye. Aye, okay, motion passed.
Westside Fire District, if you would care to make a motion, please announce your name when making and seconding the motion for the record. Then please vote or indicate whether you would like for the clerk to conduct a roll call vote of your board members present.
Cindy Marks, acting commissioner for Westside Fire, I would make a motion to ban all fireworks.
Guy Luthin, Commissioner, second.
Call for vote?
Okay.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Segal Fire District and Westside Fire District, with the verbal concurrence of your chair or acting representative, I will adjourn this joint meeting. With no further business on the agenda, this joint meeting is now adjourned at whatever time it is, 6:45. Thank you again, Commissioners, council members and staff for taking the time to be here with us today and act on this important issue. Appreciate you.
Thank you.